Good morning. I would like to call to order the December 5, 2019, business meeting. And with that, Administrator Schmidt, will you call the roll?
Yes, Chair. First, our staff support, Sean Lindgren, County Council, Kevin Moss, Clerk to the Board, Chair Bernard, and Commissioner Schrader are out of the office today. So Vice Chair Fisher is serving as Chair of the meeting. With that roll call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Fisher.
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will begin with citizen communication. And I'll call Ronald Scheel and Linda Newblum. Did I say that correctly? Come on up. And please state your name and you go right ahead.
My name's Ron Scheel. You want me to just go ahead and start?
Just, yeah.
Okay. I moved to Hilltop Road in Clackamas Heights area in 2012. I'm speaking today to point out a problem, I believe, is within the Clackamas County system and to request an action to a speeding issue on my street. Hilltop is a dead-end road, a residential road with no sidewalks or curbs. The street is used by many people, neighbors, for walking, many with pets. Children walk to school to catch, or walk on the street to catch the bus at the corner of Holcomb and Hilltop. A 25 mile an hour speed zone sign was posted near the entrance of the road in December of 1999. However, the speed limit is rarely observed. Three years ago, I contacted the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to address the speeding on Hilltop. After numerous phone calls and filling out forms at the office on Sunnybrook, I was told by the Sheriff's Office to contact the Traffic Division. Again, after many calls in which no one would call back, I finally connected with Troy, who set up the speed survey. The test showed a high volume of traffic somewhere between 95 and 120 cars a day, an average speed of 35 miles an hour with a maximum of 47. I asked Troy what my next step was. Troy told me to take the report to the Sheriff's Office, which I did, and they would address the speeding issue. Again, more forms and no action. After a few weeks, I contacted Troy again and said, "What would the next step be?" And he said I could, or a flashing radar sign could be installed on the street. He put me on the list and it would be about three months. Four months later, I contacted him to follow up, and I was told by Troy at that time that Mallory was actually in charge of the sign project. I contacted her that next day, and she told me that my name was just added to the list the day before. Mallory moved my name up to the top of the list, and the sign was placed at the end of October of this year. It's still there now. After the sign was placed, I was thanked by many neighbors who appreciated my efforts to address the speeding issue. However, when talking to one of the worst offenders, I was told the sign was ridiculous and there was no speed limit on Hilltop. I pointed out the speed limit sign at the entrance, and her response was, "It must be new, and it was for the school zone. There is no school on Hilltop." This individual lives at the end of the street where there is no sign posted for the southbound traffic. I contacted Mallory to ask if I could, I thought, simple solution, post, put a sign up. No, that doesn't follow Clackamas County policy, only one sign per road. My last contact with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office was with Sergeant Mendoza. His response was that if they came up and wrote tickets, the neighbors would be unhappy, his words. And I should take it through the mediation process, and he would send me the forms. That never happened. My point here is a lack of response by Clackamas County to address a proven problem. Mallory, truthfully, is the only person that's done what she said she would in a fairly close timeframe to what she said she would do. In closing, I would like to request that an exception be made to allow the posting of another sign at the end of the street for southbound traffic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ronald. Commissioner Savis would like to make a comment.
I do have a copy of the speed survey, if you would like it.
That'd be great. If you could give that to Kevin Moss, that would be wonderful.
Yes. So, Ron, I just want to just share that speeding issues around the county are a common problem, and we've looked into other areas where we've had speeding issues. And I appreciate you reaching out to the sheriff, and I will do my best to make sure that they address that. But we have found that where there's adequate signage and people don't obey, people don't obey, and it falls back on the sheriff. But I do want to make one clarification. Sheriff is a self-independently elected official who runs the Sheriff's Office. So we do not control or have no control over that. But I will do my best to see that they take the steps it takes. I think that if there's a safety issue and someone's violating the posted speed limit and the sign there is adequate and approved and they're not obeying it, that's what it boils down to. We got other areas where the signs are posted and people go way past the speed limit. So we tried, signage alone doesn't work, but I do want to acknowledge and thank you for your efforts, you know, because safety in a neighborhood is important. And so I'll do my best, I would say, keep on plugging away at the Sheriff's Office. And I think maybe even today's comments, the fact that you're here, might help that. And you're outside the enhanced law enforcement district, so you are in unincorporated Clackamas County, above Holcomb.
And one request that I have, if you could, if you have your comments written down that you are reading, if you could leave, or email those to us, I would love to actually have a copy of those to review.
Yeah, we can forward that to the sheriffs.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Commissioner Humberston?
I just wanted to confirm, is that, is that a county road in the county area, or is that a city road?
No, it's a county road.
It is definitely a county road?
Yes.
Okay.
It's outside of...
Outside the city limits?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. All right, Linda.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. I thank you for your time, attention, and consideration. The file for the King of Kings Church contains 818 pages of evidence and exhibits, as well as four and a half hours of testimony from the appeals hearing. I would think it would be burdensome for you to have time to read and consider it in its entirety, especially with a legal background to rule as indicated. That is one of the reasons the county employs separate expert legal counsel in land use. Mr. Wilson, the hearings office for the appeal read and heard all of it, both for and against. His judgment was made with those considerations in place as a legal representative of Clackamas County. Conditions were set in place to make it safe for the type of program in the area it was to be put in. Mr. Wilson's decision described well the reasons for all the conditions. They were thorough and thoughtful to the evidence provided. I encourage the Board of Commissioners to read his decision to understand why each condition was in place and bring forward that legal wisdom to any car camping program that is being considered in a low-density residential neighborhood. A few statements he made, I thought, might be helpful to understand some of the concerns. The applicant argues that because the SOS car camping program would only provide two or three camping spots, the participants can be screened to allow only the most worthy and least likely to be problematic homeless people. That assertion is belied by the fact that at least one of the spots is to be designated for participants from the Providence Better Outcome Through Bridges or the BOB program that appears to be specifically tailored towards people with substance abuse and mental health problems. End statement. More conditions are needed because of this. I have not heard the car camping sites in Eugene being linked to this type of program. Of course, it stands to reason conditions needed would be different. Mr. Wilson also states, "While the applicant may balk at some of the additional conditions of approval, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that there will not be material adverse impacts on the surrounding area. It is not sufficient to merely dismiss the neighbor's concern as speculation or discrimination against the homeless. The neighbors are being asked, well, told, to be the guinea pigs in this pilot program. I do not think it is unreasonable to require security and supervision conditions of approval to protect the neighbors and potential from adverse effects. While obviously not all or even most of the homeless are potential problems, the church only has to be run once to have very serious consequences occurred." At the Board of Commissioner Policy Session in March of 2017, commissioners themselves were showing thoughtfulness as to how to proceed with the car camping. There were comments such as, "We need to balance concerns that the neighborhood has because we may be perceived as imposing something on a neighborhood." I am hesitant to propose something on a neighborhood that virtually has immediate permanence without giving them a chance to see how it works because it's probably not going to be in my neighborhood or your neighborhood, or your neighborhood is going to be in someone else's. And then I know the neighborhood and the community impacts of how it can create challenges, so I'd really support us taking a really thoughtful, planful approach to this Band-Aid we are creating. You have to get a feel on how the neighborhood is going to take it, and you will hit some that are very successful where that neighborhood is behind it, but you have to test it first. I don't want people to feel like they are being rolled over in the neighborhood. Rather, we are trying something to see how it is going to work. If they feel they are being rolled over, then we will be fighting about that instead of actually fixing the problems. You can imagine the shock of the Board of Commissioners meeting last Wednesday. The lawyer the county hired to be objective and thoughtful and your own experience are thrown away to consider declaring a housing emergency because of the loss of three parking spots. In one sentence, a commissioner says it's only three cars, and then follows it later by saying, "The Board of Commissioner needs to declare a housing emergency because these three parking spots can't be used." Actually, it can be used, there are just conditions. Being winter has no bearing...
Okay, Linda, we're past time, and so I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. And Commissioner Humberston has something that he would like to say.
Okay. Anyways, I will send you emails with the rest of my comments so you can read it more fully and I can express...
Appreciate that very much.
At this point, the church has declined to go any further with an appeal to Luba. So at this point, it is, everything is on hold, and we're going to be re-looking at the policy to figure out how we're going to deal with the homeless issue. So at this point in time, there's nothing that will be happening at the King of Kings Church.
I understand. My concern was that these, I will send it in an email.
Thank you very much.
No, that's no problem. Just wanted to assure you that it's, at this point in time, it has stopped.
For King of Kings, I was concerned about it being implemented at other churches also with the safety concerns not being considered for the type of program in the areas being put into. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sarah Ward and Gretchen Groves. Good morning. If you could state your name and...
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Ward. I live in Oak Grove, a few hundred feet from King of Kings Lutheran Church. I took the church's car camping permit very seriously, and it became quite an educational journey for me this year, as for many people. I'm here today to share a few things I learned that I'd like you to consider when you're working to develop an emergency temporary camping program. It's my understanding you're talking about this on Wednesday morning.
You'll have to speak up, ma'am. I can barely hear you.
It's my understanding you're talking about this on Wednesday morning. The biggest problem with the King of Kings program was the partnership with Providence Better Outcomes Through Bridges and the BOB, or the BOB program. BOB works with emergency department super-utilizers who have substance and are mental health issues. The grant agreement between Clackamas County and BOB to provide case management for car camping programs gives priority to Providence hospitals to discharge their patients into church parking spaces. The King of Kings permit, as approved by county staff, could have allowed up to three active drug users with recent behavioral health crises to be placed in our neighborhood with no services and no security measures. This possibility was very concerning to neighbors, and when shared, when we shared our concerns with BOB and KOK, we were told to just trust their professional judgment. I appreciate the importance of low and no barrier shelter programs, but this kind of program is not appropriate in residential areas without conditions like those in the hearings officer's decision. As you move forward with a new approach to car camping, please be aware that the majority of churches in unincorporated Clackamas County are in low-density residential neighborhoods in Oak Grove, just like King of Kings. Within just two miles of King of Kings, there are nine churches, and two of those are already on board to participate in a camping program. If the partnership with BOB continues, I believe other neighborhoods will have the same concern that we did. I think it's a good time to shift focus from church properties to public parking lots. A good example of a safe parking program using public land is in Beaverton. Last year, Beaverton City Council voted to create a low-barrier safe parking program on a couple of public parking lots, and they welcomed their first guest in just seven months later with no public outcry. The county has many parking spaces on Sunnybrook Boulevard and Harmony Road that are zoned commercial. Some have security cameras. They're close to the aquatic park for showers, and only about a 10-minute drive up 82nd to the Clackamas Service Center. Rather than continue to try to force low-barrier car camping into neighborhoods, please consider a thoughtful program that our community will be happy to support, and please create a safe parking program using public parking lots. Thank you.
All right, Gretchen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. My name is Gretchen Groves, and I live in Clackamas. Again, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment this morning. I am a Clackamas County resident and the mother of two young boys, Cooper and Crosby, and I'm also a member of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm here this morning to urge the Commission to move forward on the proposed tobacco retail license ordinance without delay. In January of this year, I addressed the Commission urging your support to direct the Public Health Department to begin the process of studying a tobacco retail license ordinance. On that day, I shared that tobacco is the number-one cause of preventable death in Oregon and across our country. If used as directed, tobacco will almost certainly kill. When first addressing the Commission, I had no way of knowing that both eighth graders and eleventh graders in Clackamas County would self-report an increase of having used an e-cigarette within the last 30 days. The significant increase in the use of youth e-cigarette products, paired with the recent news of a mysterious lung illness related to e-cigarettes, is absolutely alarming. This is an urgent crisis, and we are asking for your leadership. Tobacco addiction is a big problem, and big problems require bold solutions. As the mother of two young boys, I urge the Commission to pursue the ordinance process without further delay. And every day we wait to protect our kids from tobacco addiction, another young person will become addicted to a harmful or deadly product for life. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Whitney Welchz and Sandy Thompson.
Ma'am?
Yeah?
Could you delay and have both of us together?
Who are you?
Anna Wagner and Sandra Thompson, please.
All right. Mary?
I'm Gardner.
Thank you.
We also have the similar request to sit together, Tina and Tina.
Okay. All right. Well, go ahead. And then we'll have the other folks come up. Okay.
Good morning. My name is Whitney Welchz, and I live here in Oregon City. I am a member of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and thank you guys for the opportunity to share this morning. For me, fighting tobacco addiction is personal. My entire life, I watched my parents struggle to fight their powerful addiction to cigarettes. Did they know that smoking wasn't good for their health? Absolutely. But the grasp of nicotine addiction was too strong, and that is exactly why I will do anything to protect my children from trying cigarettes or e-cigarettes. As the mother of three young teenagers and a pre-teen, I was shocked to learn that our government isn't doing everything within its power to prevent a lifetime addiction. Trying a tobacco product isn't just an example of teenagers being teenagers. In a scientific study, nearly half of teenagers who smoke just one day a week reported symptoms of nicotine addiction. What's worse, nicotine can affect the developing teenage brain, making them more sustainable to addiction of other drugs. Plain and simple, youth tobacco addiction is a serious issue. Although my parents were more vulnerable to tobacco addiction because there were, because laws were not in place to discourage retailers to sell to underage children, you have the opportunity to prevent a generation of youth from becoming smokers. I am pleading for your partnership in protecting my kids from becoming tobacco users. I urge you to continue the tobacco retail license ordinance process without delay, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Anna Wagner and Sandy Thompson.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to be the mouthpiece for both of us.
Okay.
So to speak. I was raised on a farm and...
And state your name, please.
I'm sorry. I'm Anna Wagner.
I'm Sandy Thompson.
And we're friends, and I was raised on a farm all of my life, mostly with dogs, and I know some of you have done the same. Currently, we live on about four acres in, since 1976, under zoning RRFF-5. What follows is our understanding: skunks. I need you to imagine with me the smell of skunks. You've encountered it with your dogs, maybe, or on the road, and when you do that, I want you to realize it's sort of a sweet smell, then the odor takes over, and if you think about it much, you get nauseated. Now, I want you to breathe deep. I want you to take that smell home. I want you to take it inside your house. I want you to take it to your property, and that's, and now I want you to live with that smell for six weeks. Your neighbors call it money, and you call it hemp. My purpose today is I am requesting RRFF-5 zoning ordinance 309 include hemp as a prohibited general farm use. The primary use is RR. County Commissioners, you set the zoning by grouping like properties together. It's called compatibility. You, the Commissioners, can define general farm use within RRFF-5 to exclude hemp, as you have already done with marijuana under ordinance 841. I'm not addressing GAD. I'm not addressing EFU, since only the state can define those zones. On the sheet, and I'll give you copies of what I'm going to talk with you today, are listed various reasons for excluding hemp in RRFF-5, and one I'm being, compatibility. I also have in here, in my presentation, which, the definition of hemp, and that sounds like a silly thing to do, but I want to make sure that we're on a common basis, because hemp is an agriculture product, marijuana is a legalized drug. But visually, they are the same, and they smell the same, and the only distinction between them is the testing of THC for less than 3/10 of a percent, which can be influenced by weather and water. So now, what I want to address is the size. How big can this problem become? I have a map, and I paid for it from the county, and it shows within Clackamas County, RRFF-5 is about 20,000 parcels on about 55,000 acres. In 2019 permits... Can I yield my time to Anna to finish?
Oh, maybe. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes.
2019 permits for hemp growers within Oregon were about 1,961 on 64,000 acres. The 2018, that was 11,500 acres, in essence, over a 5 and 1/2 times growth. And to give you some reason on that, 2015 had 105 acres. So it's been tremendous growth. Clackamas County in 2019 had 156 permits on about 2,100 acres. ODA, which does not track the zoning where these permits were issued, and obviously, we live near some of that 2,100. Ordinances, I think that's critical. RRFF-5 purpose states it's for rural living and to conserve the natural scenic beauty of the county. It also is to protect the watersheds and avoid potential pollution and conflict by urbanization. Its primary use is for the employment of the land for general farm use. It mentions standards purpose, protect unique character, livability, and scenic quality of royal areas of the county. It's to protect the privacy and the livability of dwellings and yard areas. That's within RRFF-5. Then you go to home occupation, which can be in there. Ordinance 822, it says it shall not create fumes or orders detectable to normal sensory perception off the property. It also states it shall remain compatible with the area. It also is supposed to be with the character of the neighborhood. Benton County, marijuana ordinance 841 recognizes odor and water consumption as problems. Benton County is currently working on finalizing a proposal of its RRIR zoning, which goes up to 20 acres. They're restricting three things: medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, and hemp. They're on the cutting edge of this issue, and we think the only county in the state so doing. It resulted from their residents' input on various things. Nothing is being done that I can find within Clackamas County on hemp, which is having similar issues, and I've talked to a lot of people. Details, I have them here, and I'll again give them to you. Distinction, the first one I have is hemp requires a permit, and general farm use does not. There is a lack of preparedness in, for dealing with the impact of hemp being regulated as a crop. And I'll conclude with this: you, the Commissioners, can define general farm use within RRFF-5 to exclude hemp, as you already have done with marijuana, ordinance 841. You have the opportunity to get ahead of this and be proactive, or wait until it's a major problem in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Mary Bumgardner.
May I ask a question? Will somebody do something with this?
Well, you were going to give the information to Kevin.
I am. Can I get feedback somehow? As to what you're going to be doing on the sign?
I'm happy if I can respond. I'll just say that I would encourage you to go back and listen to the painful, but it sounds like you're a very thorough person. But if you want to get an idea of how difficult this conversation is, go back to the, go back to the tapes, the videotapes of our business meetings in which we actually approved this, and I think you have a better understanding of the complexity of that, and...
Excuse me, approved what?
Approved our marijuana regulations.
I know.
Okay. And therefore, you're not the first person to come here with that situation. I understand that. I would encourage anyone, even my colleagues here on the dais, to spend a day or two in an area like yours that experiencing that. I know exactly, when you said skunk, I thought, I know what's coming. So we understand that, and I empathize with you completely. I'm highly allergic to it, so there's some people that have been up here that have had very severe allergies as well, so it becomes a health issue for some. So at some point in time, but it takes a tremendous amount of staff time, and that's not an excuse. I would like to see it come back, but frankly, we just need to have the time and the resources and the political will to do something. I really strongly believe in our quality of life needs to be one of our top priorities, and your quality of life is being compromised. I understand that.
Thank you for your time. I would also like to thank all the people that helped me do this, and your comment. I know what it takes to get it done. I know what it took to get this done.
Commissioner Humberston?
I just wanted to direct a correction to County Council. If there are properties that have already put in permit requests and have been approved to grow hemp or marijuana, whatever the case may be, would they be affected by a change in the ordinance? in the ordinance, or would they be grandfathered in?
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you.
When you have an opportunity, I'd like to know the answer to that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I see that Jennifer is in the audience, and she's been taking notes. And I know there's a difference between marijuana and hemp, and the differences of what's possible, but we will definitely follow up, and Jennifer heard this all firsthand. And if you could get your information, actually, to... And you got that, so that's very good. We'll be back in touch. Thank you. All right. Next up, Mary Baumgardner and Tina Butel? Did I say that correctly?
You did.
All right. Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. Thank you for providing this opportunity for citizen concerns to be heard. My name is Mary Baumgardner. I grew up in rural Clackamas County and now reside in West Lynn. I'm here today as a concerned citizen, but also as a member of Clackamas Climate Action Coalition, and we wish to share a specific concern about logging on public land. But first, I would like to take you on a brief trip, because this concern has global implications. All over the world, people are striking in the streets demanding government action on the climate crisis. Our streets are not yet blocked by protesters daily, but if the demands of the people for actual, visible policy change does not happen soon, that is a real possibility. The science on the climate crisis has been available for some time. It has become widely accepted that there is too much carbon in our atmosphere. The best current solution to this problem is maintaining and increasing intact, mature forests to capture and store as much carbon as possible. This point leads to our concern regarding the family camp timber sale. We know that Clackamas County's rare and priceless temperate forests sequester large quantities of carbon. We also know that our county, like others, is warming, and that Oregon's greenhouse gas reduction goals are not likely to be met with existing and currently planned actions. We have important choices to make. The Malala area family camp timber sale of 1,615,000 board feet from 50 acres is a clearcut, by whatever other name you choose to call it. Removal of six to 12 loads of logs, on average per day between February and April of 2020, will release carbon into our atmosphere. Shovel logging to swing logs to the road is better than dragging them, but it's still ground-based logging that will do significant long-term damage. This is not sustainability. This is blatant deforestation. Forest harvest does not result in material carbon conservation, but rather results in net carbon emissions, as measured against leaving forests intact. Forest conservation, also called proforestation, represents the greatest potential gain in addressing climate change by substantially increasing carbon uptake and storage through pragmatic changes in forest management practices. Logging, including the inherent energy costs of cutting, removal, transport, and milling, remains the major source of carbon emissions in the Pacific Northwest. Scientists have found that areas with the most logging are also where forest fires are the most intense. Clearcutting, even with new improved techniques and replanting, seriously damages forest ecosystems in addition to releasing carbon emissions. Removing a forest's cover as compared to selective thinning is a far cry from a truly sustainable harvest...
Can I give her my minutes?
...that would keep the ecosystem intact. Excessive thinning actually contributes to forest degradation and fire risk. This is well documented. Past logging practices have helped create the climate crisis and have made forested areas less resilient to fire. Increasing forest carbon capture and sequestration could move Oregon toward overall carbon neutrality by the 2030s, while simultaneously reducing wildfire risk. Fire suppression is becoming a catastrophic expense for our state. Adopting newer proven wildfire management tactics, including the preservation of older, larger trees, which are the most fire resistant, and mixed-growth stands, could actually save money while saving soils and forest habitats, as well as minimizing the many health and environmental problems from the increasing numbers of wildfires. We must find other ways to lessen the unavoidable adverse economic impacts of climate change without destroying the very oxygen-producing trees that are our best allies for improving air and water quality, habitat biodiversity, and soil and water conservation. Our water is captured, filtered, and released most efficiently by forests of varied, mature stands, both through the soils as groundwater and through the trees pulling water vapor from the air. Mature forests also filter surface water to mitigate floods and droughts and release it slowly to recharge aquifers, streams, and rivers. Even with modern modifications, logging is still a destructive, extractive industry that, though once considered renewable, that was when we had decades for the land to repair itself and when carbon capture was still an enigma. We no longer have time for these outdated concepts or for distracting conflicts between state and local governments. We no longer have time to pretend that current practices are good enough. We need urgent constructive collaboration between and beyond government entities to create viable economic alternatives to logging. Our forests are not for sale. Their greatest value now is not for cash, but for our very survival. Our present times themselves are redefining terms that older generations may have thought would never change. We need to accept that critical change is happening rapidly. Meanwhile, we have only about nine years left to significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions enough to avoid the worst effects of the climate emergency feedback loop. We don't have time to procrastinate with excuses. Clearcut logging causes devastating damages to fragile forest ecosystems, as well as releasing major carbon emissions we can no longer risk. Together, we need to galvanize all of our resources toward the common goal of environmental survival. Forests are the most powerful and efficient carbon capture system on the planet. Limiting this timber sale would be a wise start toward recognizing and acting upon the accelerating consequences of the climate crisis here in Clackamas County right now. We need your enlightened leadership to protect our forest lands while that is still possible and to move forward rapidly with a comprehensive climate action plan. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And I have some citations that I'll turn in.
That'd be great. Really appreciate it.
Five pages of references, Anna.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Give me her card, please. Baumgardner, wasn't it? Or was it? Ma'am, what was your name again? What was your name again?
Baumgardner.
Mary Baumgardner.
Thank you very much.
All right. Les Poole, come on up.
Good morning, Les Poole. Well, it seems that the subjects that matter the most to the citizens are arriving at your doorstep, regardless of your ability to address them or authority or anything else. People are showing up, and they're showing up for the same things over and over: concerns about property rights, land use, protecting the neighborhood, protecting the environment, change, fighting change. And my point is, as I sit here, week after week, I see common themes. And one of the most common themes is that there's an expectation that somehow government has all these answers, and the government needs to act. And if you don't do something, whatever it is, we're going to have to do it. We, the people, would have to do it. And so, I appreciate folks coming to you with concerns, but we have a $1.2 billion budget that is facing a shortfall. And week after week, folks come in, and you graciously accommodate them. But I think the expectation that the county has some of the authority or wherewithal or money to solve some of the things or address some of the concerns that are presented here is, well, let's just say folks are expecting more from you than you can deliver. And a lot of the issues we hear about at the county, I think, would be better served in Salem. And sometimes you're in Salem, and people show up, and, of course, they really should be talking to the county. So I don't expect you to do a lot with everything I suggest. I don't expect you to go along with everything I suggest. But I do expect you to sit there and put up with me, and you've done a good job of I wanted to say today that I mentioned a week ago that I was going to go to Metro and speak, and it turned out they had a budget meeting. They did it off-site. So I didn't go to Metro. But today, I'm going to go to Metro. And of course, I'm going to ask them a simple question, and that is, what is going on with our transportation plan and with the bond that you're working on here at Metro? How many people in the metro service area have a clue what's going on? Clackamas County has 400,000 residents, and I'll bet 300,000 of them are inside Metro. If I called all 300,000 of them today, how many of them would have a clue of what's being planned for transportation? We've got a crisis out there, and we've got special interests all over the map. And here we are with a need for some investment, and the only way to do it, apparently, is for Metro to borrow millions and millions, billions of dollars on our behalf, and then solve the problem of transportation. Of course, Metro's part of the problem with transportation. And while there isn't enough time to discuss that here, that is a subject that does need to be discussed here. So we're looking at Metro proposing a $3, $4, $5 billion bond for transportation that will be so big that it'll be a waste of time because the citizens will vote it down.
Les, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it.
I've got one more sentence. Thank you. It's been a long time for you today. I appreciate that. And that is today, I'm going to ask them, why don't you put out two bond measures for transportation instead of just one? I've got a feeling they probably won't take up on that idea. But I really think we need to... If we're going to be asking for $3, $4, $5 billion for a big variety of things, I think that more than one bond measure would be the way to go. And I think you'd get some real answers from the citizen, because the best polling out there is called an election. Thank you.
Well, we look forward to you coming back next time and giving us a report. Thank you.
I'll try and keep it under three minutes.
Yes. Yeah, trying to take advantage of the vice chair, right? All right. We are now moving into a public hearing, so I'm going to give it back to Administrator Schmidt to give us an overview.
Yes, commissioners, this is a public hearing for a board order offering to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Canby for a portion of North Maple Street, County Road Number 2579. Mike Bays from the Department of Transportation and Development will present.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Michael Bays. I represent the county's Department of Transportation and Development. Today, we have before you a request to approve a board order for the transfer of jurisdiction of a section of North Maple Street from Clackamas County to the city of Canby. This request is being discussed, has been discussed, by the staff of both jurisdictions. Clackamas County and the city of Canby have agreed to the transfer of a portion of North Maple Street to the city with the intent of streamlining roadway improvements, eliminating confusion to the public, and to improve the efficiencies of maintenance and public service. The section of North Maple to be transferred is located entirely within the Canby city limits, excuse me. The portion of North Maple Street to be transferred is approximately 490 feet long. It contains approximately 24,500 square feet of right-of-way. A notice of today's action was published for four consecutive weeks in the Canby Herald newspaper. This request is also consistent with the county's practice and policy of partnering with local jurisdictions to provide the necessary government services at the least cost to our citizens. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. So I believe now it is time to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this matter? All right. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve...
Mr.?
Excuse me. I just realized what I said. Madam Chairperson, I move we approve the board order offering to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Canby, a portion of North Maple Street, County Road Number 2579.
Second.
All right. It's moved by Commissioner Humberston and seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. Motion passes.
And again, my apologies.
That's all right. I'll hold you to it. You know it.
I know that.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval of change order number two between Clackamas County and Acrum Moseyma Associated Architects for the Sandy Health Clinic Project. Approval of the sub-recipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services for Prevent Net Community Schools and Youth Marijuana and Substance Abuse Prevention in Clackamas County. Approval of the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women Grant to Improve Criminal Justice Response to Domestic Violence, Dating Violence, Stalking, and Sexual Assault. Approval Amendment Number Three to Agency Services Agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for System Diversion, Homelessness Prevention, and Rapid Rehousing Services. Under our Department of Transportation Development, approval of a contract with Kerr Contractors Oregon LLC for the Oregon Regional Center Mobility Improvements Project. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meetings. Under human resources, retroactive approval of 2019 agreements with Providence Health Plan for Administrative Services for Clackamas County Self-Funded Medical Benefits. Under our disaster management, approval of sub-recipient grant agreement for a local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, planning and exercise. Approval fiscal year 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant. Amendment Number One between Clackamas County and the state of Oregon. Approval of personal service contract with Can Corporation for Emergency Fuel Planning Services. And underwater environment services, approval of intergovernmental agreement with the city of Milwaukee for an assignment of easements and assumption of agreements. And approval of personal services contract with Donovan Enterprises to provide financial advisory services. And that concludes the consent agenda. Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners wish to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
All right. Go right ahead.
Under disaster management, item number two, it is budgeted for, but I was curious as to the source of our match of $260,000. It doesn't say the source. It just says that we have it budgeted. I didn't know if that was general fund money or some other source. I know that one half of the larger number of $520,000 is a federal grant. I didn't know what the source of the other half was, other than that we have budgeted it.
Sorry, Commissioner, I don't know. I can quickly ask staff to come to the room, or we can pull the item till next week.
Catch me afterwards. I'd like to know.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. I had a question about the emergency housing funds, and I see that Rich Swift just happens to be here. Rich, if you wouldn't mind just coming up, and my, of course, one of our major priorities is housing and assistance, and I've followed some of the excellent work that we've been doing with rapid rehousing and helping people that are struggling with domestic violence situations get wraparound services and housed. I'm just curious how this addition of $80,000, this funding stream that is going to Clackamas Women's Services, it's an addition of $80,000, is involved in the entire system of our services. If you could just give a little bit of an overview, I think that's important for us to understand.
Sure. So I appreciate the question, the opportunity to come to the board and talk about this. So this additional money is essentially focused on our domestic violence population. And we have a waitlist related to housing for our population, our folk experiencing domestic violence. And so these dollars focus in three areas. They focus in homeless system diversion, homelessness prevention, and they focus in the rapid rehousing. So let me give you a brief overview of homeless system diversion. What this is, is essentially, we have our coordinated housing access system, and so what that does, we refer to that as R-CHAW. And I think maybe you've heard me talk about that from time to time in other study sessions, or study sessions. So what this does, because of the issues of domestic violence and the need to respond to that rapidly, this is moving dollars into those folk experiencing domestic violence and actually, essentially, moving them to the front line related to not entering into the CHAW system, but diverting them. Then, working with those individuals in regards to prevention and homelessness prevention, so that as they're moving through and we're responding to their domestic violence situation, what we're doing is we are looking at permanent housing for them. And the rapid rehousing is making sure that, once they are in permanent housing, they can sustain that housing. So we stay with them after that period for beyond 90 days, so that we are making sure that those individuals are housed, that they are safe, and that we are following through in terms of keeping them in that situation of being housed and being safe. So that's essentially what these dollars are targeting.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I think they're such an important part of the continuum of services, and we all know that resources are an issue, but we do know that the approach is effective. And I really appreciate... Sometimes when we read these cons... And I really appreciate, sometimes when we read these consent agenda items, it doesn't go into the depth of the of how important these are. So I really appreciate you coming and sharing with us.
You are more welcome, Les Chair.
So with that, is there any other comments about the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, we have it. So with that, we will move on to the county administrator update.
Yes, commissioners, I'd like to, as always, share with you some good news of the good work of our staff here at Clackamas County. Our Department of Transportation and Development received some really positive comments from our staff work from the hamlet of Beaver Creek, when our staff repaved five miles of Beaver Creek Road earlier this year. The hamlet wrote to our staff, in particular, Transportation Maintenance Manager Randy Harmon, saying, "Thank you and your team for a job well done. The repaving of Beaver Creek Road was a daunting task. Your team stayed within the estimated time for completion, communicated with neighbors daily to share the best routes on social media, and have provided our community with a safer, well-marked, and more pleasant road to and from our homes and businesses. We want you to know you are appreciated by us all." So thank you to our hamlet of Beaver Creek Board for sharing that note, and thank you to Randy and the transportation maintenance crew for their excellent work. That is my update today, commissioners.
Thank you so much. And Commissioner Communication, Commissioner Humberston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief today. We attended the climate, a number of us attended the Climate Action Committee meeting in Oregon City the other night, very well attended by the public, and a lot of interest in what can be done and what Clackamas County is doing on the environmental sustainability front. And I want to compliment our staff member who was there, Evan Polk, on his presentation on behalf of the county did an absolutely outstanding job. Secondly, attended a meeting at the museum regarding the Grand Ron's interests in the Willamette Falls area and what their what their plans are going forward. Again, another meeting well attended by the public, who are very interested in what progress is going to be made on that project. But the good news just came to my phone five minutes ago. Souter Timber has closed on the property in Estacada for the cross-laminated timber processing facility that they will be doing there. And it closed today.
Wow.
So we have made some significant progress on that initiative. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you for that. That's excellent news. Commissioner Savis?
Yep. So yeah, thank you. I did not know that Commissioner Schrader would not be in attendance today, so could I had, I have an 11 o'clock phone call for the National Association of Counties on Transportation I need to go to. So I think that our business is done. So I'll just say a few words, and then I guess you can continue on with comments. Is that that's correct? We're okay?
Technically, I think once you have no quorum, the meeting ends.
Yeah, so let's go fast. Go Commissioner Savis and then...
I'll just waive my time, but I will walk out at in about two minutes till I'm ready to make my call.
All right.
And I'm sorry I missed this. I will read quickly. Vroom, here is Artemis. She is one, she is a snoutzer mix. She is an active and busy girl. She is a young, active, and busy girl who is going to need someone to positively teach her all of the things that she can be her best self. That will involve taking her to training classes so that she can learn together. But she is worth it. She has a lot of energy to harness and wants to learn. Are you active like her? She wants to go on all of the walks and all of the hikes and do all of the things with you. She might even be really good at agility. Who knows? She would love to try. She's a young girl, so she's looking for a forever home commitment. For more information about Artemis or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Phew. Okay, thank you for that. So I do want to mention, I was able to participate in an equity, diversity, inclusion training for the Prosperity Collaboratives last evening. There were two sessions yesterday, in the day and in the evening, and it was a very thought-provoking evening. The focus of the training was really digging into what our stories are, what what our purposes, what we care about. We had interactions with people from around the table, and I can tell you, the people that I interacted with were not, there were some Clackamas County employees, but we had Clackamas Community College employees, we had residents from Clackamas County but that work in Multnomah County on hunger issues, and there was a broad group of people at this training. And the big takeaway for me personally is that the work of what is equity, what is diversity, what is inclusion, it's not checking a box and saying, well, we included people that were different or that are marginalized or that are challenged. It's really leaning in and connecting in a deeper way and really becoming competent by seeking to understand and being appropriate in our communications, which has its basis in simply respect. So that was awesome. And the other piece that was very compelling is that it takes work. It takes work to lean into equity and diversity. It takes tremendous amount of commitment and work. So it's important to know who we are and what our values are in moving forward. So, and lastly, and I know you need to go, and I know I have one more minute. Commissioner Savis? So just hold on, please.
Quickly, please.
Right, thank you very much. And it's all about being respectful of those around us as well. But I want to encourage folks to look at the Prosperity Collaboratives, Google it on our website, learn what we're doing, because we are reaching in to communities and really listening to their voice. It's an important project, and it's pretty inspiring. So thank you to Clackamas County and to Aaron who led the training and to everyone who participated. Thank you. And you have two minutes. And with that, we are adjourned.